I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please. Welcome, everybody. The minutes of the March 4th meeting, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills, do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
To move.
We've got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We've got two budget amendments this evening. The first budget amendment, Steve, you're on.
That's budget amendment number 2015-008. It's a budget additional $12,500 for the Mayor Fisher's Maryland Main Street program out of the anticipated fund balance.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment?
To move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Budget amendment?
I had a question about that.
Okay, let's go back.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
I was waiting for a discussion.
Although I went right on through it.
You went right past it.
Okay. So the motion hasn't carried. We have a motion and we have a second discussion.
This is for the Elton Alliance, is it not?
That's correct.
And just so I understand, because I have some questions on that, in FY14, we pulled money from '15 back to '14, is that correct?
Well, we budgeted an additional $12,500 during FY14. The original budget during FY14 was $50,000.
Right, so we pulled 12.
Additional 12,500 was budgeted toward the end of fiscal year '14. Fiscal year '15, $50,000 was in the original budget also. It was reduced by $12,500, the first budget amendment in July.
Right.
This is, in effect, reinstating or reversing the $12,500 that was reduced at the current year's original $50,000 to bring it back up to the original $50,000.
All right. And pulling it back one year, I was sitting here and I remember a couple of people asking, is it going to be reduced in FY15? And the answer was yes. I'm not opposed or for this at this point in time, and I know there's already been a second, but I have a couple of questions on that of, and I've asked to see the figures of why more money is needed. And we were to should ask all departments that are asking for additional money and prove why they need the additional money. That would be my comment there, and my vote at this point would be no. Only because I wouldn't want to see any department that wanted any extra money or needed money. And, look, I know there's a lot of stuff going on downtown, and I believe that the Alliance spent that extra money promoting things and doing things and stuff. I just, I want to see, or I believe that the taxpayers have a right to see how much more money is being spent from a department that we give money to than just arbitrarily just giving out money. That's all I have to say about that.
Very good. We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, Steve, budget amendment 2015-009.
That's a transfer $1,002 within the Department of Building Inspection from their engineering line item into their training and education line items for the purpose of purchasing 2015 codebooks. So we're not part of the original budget.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment 2015-009? So we can purchase the 2015 codebooks?
To move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Ken, is he here? Hey, there he is, I thought I saw him. How you doing, Ken?
Good to see everybody, it's been a while.
Yeah.
The weather's kept me, you know.
We've kept you hidden.
Yeah. Well, I'll try to make it quick. So, anyway, a lot of things have been going on for the last couple of months. We've had a really tough time with the weather. And I'm glad spring is almost here. Let's start it off, as you guys know, a few weeks ago, we had some serious water main breaks in town. And as a result, it occurred on Sunday afternoon around 3:00. And as a result, we pretty much lost Blue Ball Tower. It drained, completely drained down. Probably about midnight, it was empty. And we ended up staying there all night long and ended up going online with Artesian. And we were bringing about 1,000 gallons a minute in from Artesian, and we had the water plant putting out about 1,100 gallons a minute. We had the wells cranking out about 600 gallons a minute. We were doing about 2,600 gallons a minute. And we were unable to really fill the tower. But we were able to keep the distribution system charged. And I think everybody had water all night long until the next day. And then DPW was able to find the main breaks and shut them down. So we were able to get the tower filled, I guess, morning evening. But it was challenging nonetheless. Nonetheless, I was pretty worried about that because that's a major tower out.
Oh, yeah.
Fire protection is now is minimum. So it was very challenging. Anyway, everything worked out good. So, some of the other things that went on, we had, as a result of the hot, the weather, the rain, the snow, the melt, and the salt, we had to actually shut down the plant a couple of times and pull water from Artesian because the raw water quality was unfit to process. We were unable to process it at the plant, it was so bad. So we did that, had to do that a couple of times this past last month. Something, some other things that went on. The wastewater treatment plant, even with the cold temperatures, has performed awesome. I mean, awesome. Last month, we averaged 2.2 total nitrogen leaving the plant. And the temperatures got down to below 8 degrees centigrade. And usually, when the process gets down below 11, you start to lose it. But fortunately, that didn't happen, so we were in total compliance at the wastewater treatment plant. That said, we've been real busy. We've taken some training. All my staff has taken training on PPE and how to use it, when to use it, how to take care of it. That went real well. I had a tour yesterday at the plant. People from Southern Trent, we had some people from the UK come and tour the facility. It went very well. And this Friday, we're having a tour from the North Bay. We're having the entire staff come to the plant. And because we're getting, and this one, I'll tell you, we're getting ready, we're going to do a tour next month of 200 school kids from all the elementary schools. Cecil County are coming down to the plant, all the fourth graders. So we're scheduled about 200 kids. And so we're getting all the staff members and the teachers that are going to participate, we're going to give them a tour this Friday and go over what we're doing, what we need to do for the kids. But I tell you that you're all welcome to come by and meet the kids and, you know, maybe have a photo shoot or something. I know that, well, last time we had a major tour there, Mayor Fasner came down and they just, the kids loved it, they just were so excited about meeting the mayor. So maybe you guys can make it down.
What date is that?
I believe it's 29th and 30th, April. But I'll give you that, I'll give you.
Send us an email.
I will, I will do that. So that's, I mean, the good news is, I mean, we survived the winter and we've had, you know, we had some issues at the plants. We've had mains break and some of our emergency equipment, you know, emergency eye wash and showers outside had ruptured. But basically, we did really well. I'm really kind of pleased, I'm glad it's over now, I tell you, it wasn't easy.
Any questions for Ken?
I plan to be at the tour if my schedule allows, but
Awesome.
Being that you had it last year, what is it that the kids accomplished after you take them through a tour?
Well, I know they enjoyed it a lot. And they really liked getting the protective glasses we give them. And this year, we're going to give them all a, we're going to give them the glasses, of course, the eyewear, they love that. And we're also, we have these, I call them, they're wheels. And when we did the Cecil County Ladies Auxiliary, when we gave them that meeting, we gave them out because it was water conservation. And these wheels, you know, you can spin them and they tell you, they tell you all the many ways to conserve water. So they're pretty cool, so we're going to give them out, and they're fourth graders. But the thing about it this year, Commissioner, is they are, right now, studying, like, water treatment and wastewater treatment and like the nitrogen cycle and the denitrification cycle and the water cycle. So we're going to ask them a lot of questions and it's going to be a really, a very educational experience for them because it's something that they're already taking in school.
Right.
So it's going to be fun. I think Brian, I want to say Brian Anderson is the gentleman from North Bay that is working and coordinating this with the school system.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jean Minter, I think you have a resolution.
Good evening. What is, the resolution that's before you is actually a resolution to approve an application for funding of the Elton facade grant program, downtown facade grant program. We actually were already awarded the grant, but they noted that they needed a resolution from the town in support of it before we can receive the grant documents. So the resolution, R2 2015, is, you know, the board approving the application receipt of financing for the Elton Downtown Facade Improvement Project. It's a community legacy grant application. I think it's, it hasn't been funded prior under legacy, it was a different grant source that funded this, which is why this is the first time we've had to actually do a resolution for the facade grant program. Facade Grant Program has actually been going on in town for a long time, and Commissioner Tblonsky, in her role as Main Street Manager, has actually been obtaining and managing this grant prior, in prior years. So it's for $50,000 to assist property owners in the downtown area, Main Street, North Street, in those areas, with facade improvements on their properties. And it's proven successful. I think Elton is one of the top performers with this grant, from what I understand. And an example that we used in the application was Eddie's Fashions had applied for this facade grant, was awarded from the facade committee that is established. And he had seen a 40% increase in his, in traffic in his store as a result of that.
Wow.
So it's a good, it's a good thing. And the state, you know, feels that we do handle the grant well, we perform well, and they like to see us continue.
So you need us to make a motion to move forward with the application?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to move forward with resolution 2-2015?
To move.
We've got a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the legacy grant application?
I would just like to add one thing to what Jean said. We've received $450,000 in the past and generated about $2.2 million in improvements downtown.
The grants are 50/50?
They are normally a 50/50 match. Because this is through community legacy, they do not have to have a match this time.
Oh, okay.
Do we have, is there a list of storefronts from worst to best? Like a scale of 1 to 10, when money comes in, it's this storefront, then this one, then this one?
I believe in the past, the facade committee would review, you'd have to apply as a property owner, you'd have to want to do it.
Got you.
Because in the past, you had to provide 50% of the funding for the improvements.
Got you.
And I think there's already a list of three.
There's actually more now than I wanted, but we'll do a press release as soon as this is complete. The committee is together, the press release will go out, and the applications are ready to go that they will send in, and then it's up to the committee to choose the applicant.
Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Lou, you were on.
My turn. The first item I have is a resolution, surplus property. The Elton Police Department has a firearm that no longer meets their service requirements. It's used for training, I believe Chief Tom will
Yes.
Comment on?
Yes.
And in order for the town to sell this, it has to be declared as surplus property. And then once it's declared as surplus property, we will sell it to a licensed firearms dealer. You can't sell guns otherwise. We had done this in the past, so this isn't our first rodeo perspective, selling firearms to licensed dealers. And I would ask the board to enact resolution R1 2015 for the purpose of disposing of this weapon.
Do we have a motion to approve R1-2015, surplus property?
To move.
Second.
And a second, any discussion?
One question. How many dealers, gun dealers do we have in Elton?
We don't sell in Elton, I don't think.
No.
We, this is part of the buyback program from about two years ago, we went through RICS, Elton Rising Sun. If they have a number of weapons, they trade them, don't they? Normally, except in this case. Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second item I have, Sun Edison Green. The town has met with Sun Edison and Standard Kohler several times to discuss this 2+ megawatt system they want to build, or we want to have them build next to the treatment plant. And they have sent us a number of agreements, and the current agreement we have, we still need to refine some of the language. However, I think if the board is in favor of this project, and I would recommend that we go forward with the project, I think that it's a good thing for Elton to save money and all that, but I think that the board should pass a motion that allows us to refine the language in this agreement and make the agreement contingent upon approval of Merrell. If I have a recommended motion, please, it's been reviewed by council.
Do we have a motion?
Send us a move.
And the motion asks, Lou, so why don't you go ahead, I'll go ahead and read it. Motion to authorize solar power and services agreement with Sun Edison for the construction of a solar system adjacent to the Elton wastewater treatment plant, contingent on the final agreement being accepted to me, whose execution on behalf of the town is hereby authorized. So we have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last item I have is a rather complex ordinance for floodplain management. Ordinance 3, 2015, what that does is, what you'll do when you pass this in action, will repeal the current floodplain ordinance and replace it with this new ordinance. The town, two years ago, passed an ordinance similar to this. However, since that time, a flood insurance study has been completed, the floodplain maps have been updated, and some additional language is added that FEMA requires, and of course, we have to MDE, but FEMA is the agency that pushes this under the various acts, federal acts regarding floodplain management. This is for introduction tonight, and I don't know if you want to read it, you can read it, it's many pages long, but it's a model ordinance with some slight amendments to it. But essentially, it meets all the standards that the state and the federal government will require for us to manage floodplains and allow us to stay in the program, the flood insurance program. In the absence of this, we could not participate in that program.
Do we have?
I would recommend you
It's for introduction, right? Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 3-2015 for the floodplain to be presented for introduction?
To move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion for being presented for introduction? Jean, are you okay with the language in that?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the state had provided us with a model ordinance to follow. They had originally sent us an ordinance two years ago, which we adopted, but this has been updated to include coastal zone flooding and tidal flooding. They apparently did the non-tidal and tidal separately, which entailed two iterations of this ordinance and maps. The maps have all been changed, I have the maps here and the flood insurance study here, which is
Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I had a note here that the first floodplain management ordinance ever adopted by the town was on February 26, 1980, when James G. Kraus was the mayor, so
Wow.
That's 35 years ago, so we're keeping up on it. We're on top.
Very good, I guess I'm the one now, huh? Okay. My report, I've got quite a few things here this evening. The first on our list, the mayor commissioners decided several months ago to expand the ethics board from five, or from three members to five members, and we did make an appointment about a month and a half ago for the fourth member. And I'm pleased tonight that I'd like to recommend if we appoint Mr. Pedro Rodriguez for a five-year term expiring February 29, 2020. Anyone to second that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion about Mr. Rodriguez? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We've got, Mr. Rodriguez is here in the audience tonight. We'd like to get a photograph of him. One of the things that Commissioner Van Rynen had mentioned to me the other day was that as we start to make the appointments to our newest officials, I think we'll start moving forward and taking photographs, and I want to start doing this with the planning board, the Board of Appeals, and we'll get that posted onto the website. Let's all get around Mr. Rodriguez. Smile real big, we're going to smile real big. You want to squeeze together? I want some more.
Earl, can you hear those funny ears?
Thank you.
I still say we're wasting a good background here.
Hope we never have to use you.
So do I.
We could put the, we could put a picture of the flags behind and drop that down.
That's a good idea.
Okay, the second thing that we had, I know over the years, the town of Elton has always talked about Hoppy Hammond. And I'm sure everyone knows who Hoppy Hammond is in town, and, of course, he certainly brings a smile to my face any time that I see him, and I don't think I've ever seen the man not be happy. And we know where he sits out on the bridge. We know what he does, he waves, he's certainly gotten a lot of press over the years. I think that the mayor commissioners before me had tried to see if they could recognize him in some manner by maybe putting a sign on that bridge. Well, we basically got the okay from the State Highway Administration. And I'd like to see if the board has interest, and this was just a, an idea of a sign, and we can tweak this any way we want to, but, you know, we want to say, "This space is reserved for Elton's Ambassador, William Hoppy Hammond." You know, "We are Elton." And it would be a bronze plaque that we would put right where he says. And it would be something that the board, I want the board to think about it and see if they want to make any changes to this, and if it's something that we want to move forward with. Is there any discussion in general? What's the feeling?
I think it's a fantastic idea. He deserves a statue, but, I mean, that would be great.
I was tickled when I was looking at the news, and I started thinking of Hoppy when the weatherman drives through in Baltimore, and people recognize him early in the morning waving, and I pictured Hoppy sitting on the bridge. I think it's a challenge, well, I'm not talking about challenges. But anyway, it was on the news, and this one guy drives around and he tells which route to take, and everybody recognized him first thing in the morning, he looked for him, and it brings a smile effect, he said.
It absolutely does to men.
I'd like to see that occur because when I was working at Elton High School, the staff there was always commenting the fact that they have a bright smile from a person like that on the way to work, and it'd be a great idea to have that happen.
Very good. Makes it easy.
All for it.
All right, very good. All right, we had a couple of other things here. I think, I sent everyone an email the other day, going back to grass clippings, my favorite subject, and we're getting near that grass clipping time of the year. The whole purpose of this exercise, and I say "an exercise," was try to bring some awareness to our residents about a couple of things. One, the, what the new law is going to be on the town of Elton in a few years from now. And then, secondly, make them aware that this isn't an easy job to pick these clippings up all the time. And we have to take, whether it's our fault or not, we get the blame for not picking up the clippings at the correct time. And as we know, if the clippings are out and they were supposed to be picked up on a Tuesday and it rained, we probably wouldn't get them until Wednesday or Thursday. And as we know, that's the biggest problem, is that the clippings will be washed into the storm drains and so on, and that causes the issues that we could have with the state. So through this process, we've analyzed a lot of different things. Possibly getting our current trash waste management to give us a price on picking up the clippings and not us doing them. And I think that that number came back at about, close to $300,000, I think was that cost for waste management to do it. We also looked at trying to encourage our residents to use mulching-style mowers. We've also talked about possibly no clippings at all being picked up. That really wasn't my intent when I say that. I'd like for it to be absolutely gone, but this led us into the fact, probably the discussion that the mayor commissioners had a couple of years ago about putting them into the bags. And I've researched those bags, and it was a little unclear, other than now that I see the bags, you put them right inside your grass picker-upper. So anyone that is putting grass clippings on the street, they're probably using a bagging system as it is. I don't think that they would be raking their yard with the clippings, they're picking it up in their lawnmower and its bagging itself. Well, these bags are actually liners. They fit right into where your bag is, and so your clippings go directly into the bag. And I think we need to make a decision whether we're going to pick the clippings up the way that we're currently doing it, and wait until the state comes to us and says, "You ought to eliminate it altogether," or we take a proactive role here and attempt to maybe try it a little differently. And I'd like to ask Dan, you and I spoke the other day a little bit, do you have a, if we went with the bags, is there a game plan that we could attack this all like in one day? Is there, is there any thought about this?
Yes. If you, in a perfect world, what I would do is have people register through, into my department, so I know who's actually participating. Then you can initially give them maybe the first five bags, or I'm not sure if the board decides to do it that way. And my game plan would be, I would tackle it on Monday mornings. If I can do it Monday mornings, if I know exactly where I'm going, as long as it's in a bag, I can wipe it out, I could probably wipe it out, probably happen on Monday, worst-case scenario. As long as it's in bags, it's got to stay in bags, you know, if it's getting picked up, move it, we can make that happen, yes. And the good thing about the bags is, the bags can take weather, we proved it last year. You take, you have that bag, you have it for two weeks, it's still in good shape, good picker bags.
Now, the, once, once it's in the bag, what do we do with the grass clippings?
It will stay, as always, again, I do the paper bag, we pick them up, instead of sucking them up, we can transport them in a truck, we can take them to the landfill, and the paper bag is biodegradable, so it actually goes into the landfill as it is, and we grind it up, and that's exactly, the landfill's no issue with that.
What would happen if, if one of our residents didn't put their bag out on Monday, and it got out there on a Tuesday?
We'd get it, but we would notify them, saying, "Hey, you need to help us on a Monday." I mean, I would take place, but I would give them notice, you know, "Monday, work with us, see what's left." It would be much easier that way. That way's more efficient. Monday's also a best day, because most people work on Saturdays, that's, you know, it's one of my plans.
But if Monday is the designated day, how would they know that there's a bag out there beyond that day?
They wouldn't.
It wasn't, we'd have to come across.
What my suggestion would be in that case, that we have a directive to any public works employee that's driving a pickup, which is everybody. If they see a bag, they pick that bag up. They can allow that bag, and if it's a person that constantly is in violation, then we would try to attempt to educate them back to that Monday. But I think we'd have to put together a whole educational process for this, because I know it's not a very popular thing that I'm talking about here. I know it's, I know it's not.
Can I ask a question? That is not the same bag that you brought to us before. It is the same bag?
Yes.
But I don't think we were told it could go in the bag of your mower. It was something, because I remember, I believe, Mr. Piner saying, rake it up, put it in the bag, and then putting it out. It was, it looked like an Acne brown bag.
Yeah, if, I didn't see the bags, but I'm assuming, and I bagged mine, and I put it out on the curtain. It's one of the perks of living in Elton when I moved here. It was, still is, hopefully still will be, until the state tells us different. But a bag, if it's not perforated, if it's not perforated, then I can't imagine it going into my, my, my bag of my mower, because the, the air that's going in there with the grass clippings won't be able to escape. So you'd still have to empty your grass clippings bag into that bag, it's just one more step to done by them.
Only comment I would have, you made a comment about people registering, the ones that participate. If you're not going to do it for one, if you're going to do it for one, you got to do it for all, far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, but it's easier that way.
Well, I'm just saying, if someone's participating, someone's not, then you're going to have that trashy look regardless which way you do it. If you set something for the town to do, if we're all involved, we're all involved. If we're not, then it shouldn't be put out there for just part to do it and the other part not. I'm just, that's the comment I have to make from that. I'm, to be honest with you, I don't want to be dealing with a whole bunch of bags like I used to, I'm getting older now, I can't do like I used to.
Well, I guess the reason why I brought that up, I'd like for the board to, let's kind of put this to bed by the next meeting, good, bad, or indifferent. My suggestion would be, if we move forward with it, we put it into the bags, and then it would be picked up that Monday morning, and we'd have to go through a marketing campaign, we'd have to let every resident of the town know that this is the way that we're going to go, and there certainly is going to be some bugs in it. But if we don't want to go that route, then we'll continue to pick the clippings up as they are, which is, is a challenge, but we get it done, we've got it done all the time.
Who pays for the bags?
Well, right now, I would suggest that we would buy the bags for the first, for the first time, so they know exactly what type of bag.
It turns back to the registering, that shouldn't set up first by the page.
Yeah. And I think that we determined, we determined that there was about a little less than thirty percent of the residents of the town that are using this service. So if we're looking at that, we're probably looking at about 3,000 homes, or 2,500 homes? That's probably a high number.
No, you're probably looking at, yeah, about, yeah, about 300.
300 homes?
Nah, more than 300.
No, 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 2,000. 2,000? Because that was 600 of them.
1,200, about 1,200.
There you go.
About 1,200 homes, and, so if you gave them all a bag, you're looking at ordering 1,200 of these bags, or these packages, and that would be at $2.50 each, so we'd be looking at $3,000 or close to it in, in our initial bag purchase. And, but, I want to put it to bed one way or the other.
Can I have one more question with this, because it keeps going on and on? We still have the back truck that we get up the grass clippings. And what we want to do in five years is they not go into our water system. Right now, as far as recycling, we have a trash can, we have recyclable stickers that say recyclables. What if we add a separate trash can with a lid that said, "Grass clippings"? That it's not a lot of expense, those stickers, and then you put your grass clipping in the trash can with the lid, it'll keep it out of the rain, you use the truck that you have. It may be a start.
The only issue we have is, people have a tendency to hide things in the grass, that's also happened to us before, you know? We've had rebar hidden in brush pile, see that needle's hit, and they've had cans hit, those are the things that we pick up.
But they're already in the clippings in the street as well.
Sometimes I'll throw rocks in it, sometimes you'll get a mess, you'll get the rain unknown. So if you pick it up, you have to go see what's in the can. That's the only hesitation, the rain unknown.
To Mary Jo's point, sorry. Sorry. She, you're going to have that, it's already in the grass clippings laying on the road now, so what's the difference?
If you see it, then you can kind of push it aside as best we can, that's all we should see it ahead of time. Whereas, you know, think about, work somewhat like a ding, chop bag. That's how I work it, coming in there, so. And that's the only hesitation. How are you going to see it in a paper bag? A paper bag doesn't matter, you're not picking it up. It just goes, it goes into place, it's in the landfill, it'll work that way.
Going back to the registration process, now, how's that going to take place?
Oh, all they have to do is tell us, we're interested, we'll record it, we'll have a regular spreadsheet, we give them five bags.
How, I'm saying, how are you going to, how are you going to know who's interested, or who wants to have it done?
Or they advertise it.
How are you going to advertise?
That's the whole point I'm getting at.
Well, I can answer that, I can tell you what my thought was, is if we would go with a one-page flyer, and we would hand-deliver to every house in the town of Elton this one-page flyer that explains exactly what the process is. And I, and I think even if we don't move forward with, with the bags or this process, I still think that we need to do this one-page flyer to explain to them what day their collection is, why it's important for us to pick it up on that day, and we as a team have to be better in picking up when we say we're going to pick it up. Because I think that's the biggest problem, is that rain, the elements is what throws the little bit of hiccup, and then we'll have a resident that's not, if their day is on Monday, there's no, there's no reason why they can't do it on Tuesday. We don't enforce, per se, our own rules. And if we, if we enforced our own rules, I think that when it came to that, we could do a little bit better job also.
That's fine.
So give it some thought, let's put this thing to bed, one way or the other.
Have we looked at the tax savings to, because we're going to charge the individual whoever signs up, so the rate for the bags?
No, I think the first, the first set of bags were $2.50.
Right, for 3,000, if I'm going to use more than five bags, I mean, in a month, I'll use more than, more than five bags.
And they can be, I can tell you, I got the price directly from American Home and Hardware, and it was $2.50 for five bags.
Is that a mulching mower?
Or a mulching mower.
Hopefully, it'll get used back.
Very good. All right, thank you, guys. I wanted to make everyone aware, and I think we brought this up one other time, was that when we head to the Maryland Municipal League, Commissioner Givens is going to be in his 21st year, and he's going to be honored, he's going to be, is going to be elected into the MML Hall of Fame, and very happy to be the one to say I nominated you. And I'm looking forward to being there, but I think it's very important that whoever's on the board, if we can make the dinner that night to support our fellow commissioner, I think it'd be a great thing. So, 21 years.
I agree with that.
21 years. And that bounces back to during the Maryland Municipal League event this past year, it happened to be that Commissioner Piner, Commissioner Givens, and myself happened to walk by the solar booth, and that's how we started this relationship. So it took, in a promising way, we've gone now six, nine months since our trip around that day, and if everything goes well, it's going to be a savings to the town as much as $130,000 a year in electricity, electricity costs. And that's a wonderful thing, it's a wonderful thing. So we don't just all hang out at the beach. Dan, what's the status of the trees out front here?
They should be replaced. The good news is the trees are available, but that bad news is so wet they can't get to them, so, within two, three weeks, they should be back, they're ready to go.
And we are putting the tree boxes in, I saw them out there, is that correct?
No, no, they're going to be flushed, they're going to be flushed with the, you know.
They're tall, but you have to put tree bits down.
I'll put something in there, yes, I'll put something in there.
Tree pits?
Yeah.
By the standard?
R31.
Yes.
Very good. Just want to make sure they go in there, I see that.
I see boxes, I'm thinking of a book there.
I saw them cutting out the rooms and everything today, every warm day they've been getting in, and I think that they've got everything out, out there. But the whole purpose of that was to make sure it won't happen again. Gene, you're on it. The, I wanted to mention to the board that I'm not sure if I'll have it ready by our next meeting, which would be, well, what a perfect day, April 1st is our next meeting, but I will have an economic development plan for the town. And this plan, I've been doing a lot of work with it, and it's going to be a proposal I'm going to make to the board to take a look at and see if we're all on the same page here. I'm going to attempt to get you to buy into my plan. I have some details, but not a lot of details, I want to make sure everyone digests it first. But it's going to be with a team concept, more so than one individual, and just in concept, we would have staff members on this team, existing staff members, as well as myself and the Elton Alliance. I hope they can fit into this task. And this way, I think that would give, I think when we put this together, I think you're going to see, if it, if it, if it works, then, then we did the right thing. If it doesn't, and when it comes down to the funding mechanism in the future, I can say that, hey, it failed, or it was a go, or what direction we had to go here. And I think that, I don't really want to comment too much more now, but I'm putting the details together, and I think everyone will be very happy with it, I hope. So that was that. So I will have an economic development plan for you. The, hopefully, this is the last thing I have tonight. During the election, I spoke a little bit about eliminating fees or freezing the fees, trying to attempt to do something to stimulate growth and jobs in our town. And I'd like to use General Motors as an example. General Motors, if they're not selling any cars, they offer rebates, they offer low-interest loans. When you have, and if they start selling vehicles, they eliminate the rebates or the incentives. We have in the town of Elton right now, 236, we've got 236 vacant lots, unimproved lots remaining in one section. Then we also have an area that's recorded of 353 more lots that are not, that they're recorded, but they're not under construction. But we've got 236 lots that are available to build houses. And our economy has changed a lot, but when I served many, many years ago, it was a booming time, as we know, it's just the way the economy was, but we were going through about 100 to 120 houses, building permits per year. The last couple of years, I, we could probably count them on our hand, how many we had. My thinking is, if we could do everything we can as a town to try to stimulate these 236 lots to be built, and I'm going to do a little sidebar here, I met with the mayor of Middletown, was it last week, Gene? Last week. And they are building several hundred houses per year still. And we've got these lots ready to go, and when you take it from a taxing standpoint, I'll, I'll use a revenue driver here, 236 lots at, let's say, the average house would be assessed, where it'd be $1,000 in town taxes, that would be $236,000 in perpetuity for the town from here on out, if you can entice them to get built. Yes, you'd be losing hookup fees or reduced hookup fees and so forth in the interim, but what it would prevent is, we have areas in the town of these nice neighborhoods that have vacant lots that it doesn't appear that they get taken care of. And I think that some of our calls are always, hey, can you make sure you call this guy to get this park mode down, or this sidewalk hasn't been fixed, or the road, there's not a final course of blacktop on, on the remainder of the road. There's a lot of impact by not having those lots with houses on them. So once again, I would like to ask the board to think about these 236 vacant lots that are ready to go, how can we entice builder to come on and take over these lots? Is there any incentive that we could do as a town to make that happen? I believe we should reduce the major facility fees, front foot assessment, and give them a window time there of maybe a two-year window, and if they're not built in two years, then they shouldn't have come back to us and say, "This would help me sell these lots." So I'm not asking for any decision, I'm just asking, I wanted to put that in everyone's ears, and hopefully we'll get some feedback from our citizens once they read it in the paper or see it, and maybe it could be a good thing or a bad thing, so.
I heard you need that for budget, or?
What's that?
Before budget.
Oh, I'd like to have some feedback on it here in the, in the near future, but it won't impact our budget at all. I'd like to say that we're going to build 200 more homes next year. feedback from our citizens once they read it in the paper or say it, and maybe it could be a good thing or a bad thing, so.
I heard you need that for budget.
What's that?
Before budget.
Oh, I'd like to have some feedback on it here in the, in the near future, but it won't impact our budget at all. I'd like to say that we're going to build 200 more homes next year and be able to count on that revenue, but we know that's not going to happen. So that's all I have tonight. DJ, you're on tonight.
Oh, switched up on me. Good evening, everybody. I, let me start with, let me start with Steve. I need, I still didn't receive a copy of the 340 and 350 account, where all of us didn't receive that. We were supposed to get a copy of the water fund and sewage fund, Green Bar, from our last meeting. Didn't, Rob, didn't you ask for that?
FY, yeah, 15. I think it was, it was 15. And piggybacking off of what the mayor is saying about homes, we had talked some time ago about revenue, annexation was the last meeting, and what the revenue side of it is, and, and we, we don't talk often enough about the services side, the cost side of it. And I asked if there was a formula or anything like that. And what I'd like to introduce to the board is actually, what I decided to do was just take it, take it upon myself, and since we pay dues to MML, I decided to go MML, and there's a guy there that's absolutely wonderful. And I asked him, is there a spreadsheet, is there any type of thing that any other town uses to figure out cost effectiveness of a household versus revenue? And within a day, he had me a thing, and I have eight copies. And Michelle, can you pass those out real quick? I'm sorry I don't have copies for everybody, but it's, it's actually really easy. The other thing that he did, I made sure that what we found was a Maryland town, not Delaware, Jersey, or anybody else. And basically, it's just a copy of an annexation impact analysis. The town is Berlin, Maryland. The number of homes that they want to annex in, in this particular formula, at the top of the circle is 15 with a assessed value of $250,000. They, now, they have a total of 21,000 homes, a little over that. But if you look down through there, they talk about the state income tax, motor vehicle tax, cable franchise, police protection, so on and so forth. Real property for revenues, they have that figured out. So we can plug in our own numbers. And, because one thing that I'm concerned about when, when the mayor is doing his budget and, and thinking about cost cutting to, for major facilities and things like that, is, is the last thing that I want to do is give somebody, not the right information, not necessarily wrong information, but not the right information. So I don't know what we can plug in here. As you can see, it's really not that hard. We could just change some of the titles and figure out exactly annexing, what was it, 120 homes? I think that's what it was over there. It was 120 homes with a median of, say, 150,000. I mean, we can do these calculations ourselves. The other nice part about this is we can take existing communities and take a look at police services with the police department, the fire department, DPW, park and rec, and we can actually start targeting and being more efficient of what areas are costing us the most. It's really not that hard once you start breaking down the numbers. It is going to start with, I, I expect it to take a little bit of time to put all the hour numbers into this formula, but once it's done, I really think over the long run, it's going to save us a hell of a lot of money. And if the board, you know, would please take a look at it, see if it's something of interest that we would want to do. The second part of it is the, is actually just a resolution. And I don't know if we, do we have a resolution as far as the adopting or annexing a policy in place, other than I know it needs to go in the paper and stuff like that? But theirs is a little bit more in depth, that it has to be a certain median. Unincorporated territories, they talk about. I didn't know if we actually had a section as far as true annexation.
The annexation resolution that we, that the board will ultimately adopt has everything in it.
Okay.
And then supplemental to that, we prepare a plan that goes to the county and to the Maryland Department of Planning. Then after it's adopted in the 45-day period, we notify the clerk of the court for Cecil County, the Maryland Department of Legislative Services, and now we hit the Senate to FEMA.
Okay.
We've done that. That's what we do. We meet all the requirements by law.
But every time I, and then every time that, we don't know what house costs us, and we've talked about that, I've talked about that a couple of different times. And I really don't want this just to fall by the wayside. I really feel it's extremely important that we know exactly what we're looking at here, especially building more homes, because the cost of services will eventually exceed the property value that we're getting as far as revenue without having the commercial side of it also tied into this. You know, it's, it really is a simple business model. I do agree with, with more residents. We have more attraction downtown. I really, I like the idea, the establishment of we are a destination place, where we have that breakfast, I mean, all of those things to think about, but what is the total cost? In this scenario, I think after services, they netted out, the very bottom was $4,315 after their calculation of services revenue. So I'd really like to see where, where we stand and just see how, see how well we're doing. Are we, we doing bad? We doing good? You know, we putting too much emphasis on, on cost over into the water and sewage fund? Can we, can we save, as the mayor's demonstrated, can we save money? You know, on that side of it, I mean, there's, where's the cost analysis of it all?
I, I think this is a good idea. We have never, I've only been here 24 years, and we've never annexed a subdivision before. I don't know if we ever have in the history of the town of Elkton. So this is kind of a unique thing. Majority of annexations we've had are either improved properties, petition from the property owner, which usually is one owner or an LLC or something like that. The impact of that is negligible because it's just one property, like the Elkton, I mean, Elkton Gas, for example, 3.4 acre parcel that's going to be commercial, we won't provide any services to them other than police protection or something. But it's a commercial property that's going to be annexed, but they're based on a petition. The Holly Hall, and if we move to Thompson Estates, Elkland Estates, those three enclaves, so to speak, they'll be a unique scenario for us. And a case like this would be appropriate because you have over 100 homes there, and you do want to know what, what's going to happen, assuming that those 100 homes want to annex.
Well, if they do, then we should be prepared. My little neighbor...
We have initially prepared One Street, and we knew that our initial analysis actually will cost those people more money to be residents of the town of Elkton than if they stayed out of Elkton, because we compare all the prices, and their taxes will pay, and their trash and everything, and then we look at a bottom line. But what we haven't done is added the cost of police services and things like that.
Right.
And that's, that's appropriate to do.
If we had, if we had 50 acres, a developer came in, he bought those 50 acres, and he wants to develop 250 houses, we have no formula at this particular time to say, hey, that's a great move for us, or it's a bad move for us. I mean, that, that's, it is, real property tax, absolutely. But at some point, at some point, the problem is that services get so great, because then you have to hire more police, more DPW, that it, the cost exceeds the revenue side because you don't have the commercial side offsetting it enough. So how, how can, seriously, how can, how can we make sure that we're not taking, taking care of the residents that are out here?
You're on point with this, because residential subdivisions, especially large ones, will have a higher demand for services than a commercial development, which is, would be a plus. I would always go commercial if I could, because you're basically going to get high property taxes, personal property taxes for that, and a minimal services other than police protection, maybe some zoning and public safety issues. So, but a residential subdivision, as the police can attest, puts a big demand on police services.
Sure.
And plowing, and sidewalk maintenance, and roads, and, you know, on and on.
And the nice thing about this formula is you could actually break it down to developments. So you could actually see that chapel run is costing a lot of money in taking down trees and fixing sidewalks, where there's high crime rate, you can actually do pinpoints on it. So, and then you would be able to take, the police department would be able to actually take their services and know that they need to go there more. And I know that you guys target areas now. I know that that's, that's a factor. So anyhow, I don't want to beat this anymore. I like the idea. I hope the board does, if we could take a look at it, actually start instituting anything. I'll get the guy's name or forward the email that sent, the gentleman that sent it to me from MML.
Jim Pack, probably.
Who?
Jim Pack.
Yep. A great guy.
He's a very knowledgeable individual.
Great guy. He thought it'd take a couple of days to get this information, and, and literally the very next day, he had it to me. Good guy.
The calculation that they used on here, it was they took the total amount of households and divided it into the budget. And it came up with an X number.
Yep.
And then when they got the X number, based on, I would say, if you put a pie chart together and you showed your, your fixed services for your contract for water and wastewater, your contract for trash collection, your contract, your, your section of policing and so forth, and that's how they separated it out in that way.
They break it out to, not the ridiculous, but they break it down, the parking wreck, equipment charges, animal control, which we don't, emergency management, which we would pay a portion of that with the 911 thing. So, I mean, everything's broken out. We can plug in our own numbers, which is nice. I mean, it's just an Excel spreadsheet.
Very good. Thank you.
Just a point I wanted to make is remember that your residential density supports the commercial uses. So if, if we limit residential development, then the commercial uses may not have enough population to support them. And when I see commercial development come in, for example, a shopping center, they like to know that there's going to be additional residential development nearby.
Right.
To support their, their commercial use.
Absolutely, great. Dan, on the retention ponds, we had talked about a month ago about the subcontract that came in, and he didn't cut the trees all the way down to the ground. And we had, I had heard something that they were supposed to go back and make sure that those trees were cut to the ground. Is that right?
The best part, the best part, when I heard you came back, they trimmed the rest up, so.
I can tell you over where I am, because I walk around there, they're still, and they're, they're huge. They're still up all around, on the inside of the retention. I'm assuming that, that when the bid was for it to cut everything down to ground level, you can come on out, I can show you. I mean, it's easy.
I'll miss it.
Yeah, just walk around. So I'm assuming if mine's that way, then there's a lot of other ones that are, that are that way.
Yours is probably one of the worst ones. You got a lot of...
Thanks. Button Woods, I saw the thing about the percentages come in as far as people that wanted the parking permits, and I'm all for going that way. And then 100 and 500 block as far as building overflow parking, is that the only place that we would have to build overflow parking?
We already, we built overflow parking before down towards, I think they're the 400, 400 blocks.
3 and 4, right.
So what about 1 and 2?
That's why we're shifting it up there, because it's kind of spread it around a little bit.
And then over on the other side, as far as, is it 1 and 2 is on the other side, right? So you would have to do something over there, too?
Well, the 100 blocks, when you first come in, first left, 1, 2, the 4s.
Yeah, our initial plan right now is to do some addressing at the 500 and the 100 block and see how that, keep that, leave any problems. So that's what I've set up for probably within a month. The 100 to 500.
We weren't going to spend any money until we figured out what we're going to do as far as parking, right? Mayor?
Has there been any decision made by this board to move forward with any of that? I know we discussed during several workshops, and when we had the final proposal or plan together, you'll bring it in front of us, and we'll make that decision.
All right.
I mean, I'm for, I'm, I'm ready to move. I'm ready to move on it, quite frankly.
As far as the parking permits or building or...
Just creating more spots and, and creating more spots and, and I, I, it's, it's a tough one out there, you know? I saw the feedback from the survey, and, and it's a shame that we, we built the standard to one and a half, that was the standard back then, you know, one and a half cars per household, and it was a crazy standard. And the contractor or developer didn't do anything wrong, but that was the formula they had worked with. And today, and today, everyone has more cars. I mean, there's, the residents over there had five cars. Six cars. And if you give them two parking, I'd like to say, I guess going to the nuts and bolts of it, I would be, I would agree that two permits per household could make it, because I think in your last workshop, you showed that you could create two spots per house.
We could create, the initial plan is we're creating, I believe, it was 11 spots in the 500 block and eight spots in the 100 block. The only thing is, I caution the board, if you want to do another overflow, then you, then you, it's like, what, what's the surface?
Curvy surface.
Curvy surface. Then you got more curvy surface, and that'd be triggered another study. So what I'm doing now is I'm sort of manipulating the curve so to get a little bit of parking spots. But if you look in an overflow, there's another curvy surface study, so that's why I was initially trying to do the 500 and the 100 block, let me get that fixed, and then see if that leaves any problems. I want to alleviate the problem with the 300 and the 400, because that's, you know, more cars and people. That's the difference. I do have overflow right next door.
So then you would have the 3 and 400 block coming up here wanting the same thing, right? I'm assuming.
No, I couldn't mitigate the 3 and 400 block. Not, not the way the others did it.
Was there enough parking in those two blocks to give two people?
My understanding is 3 and the 400 block has two spots per house.
That's what my understanding was.
That was the same for the 3 and 400. The reason we issued just the 100 and the 500, because there was more houses than parking spots. So that's why I did it that way. That was my understanding.
But I'm ready to go anytime.
I'm good with it. I like the parking permit idea.
Any feedback on that? How do you feel on it?
We spoke about that too much as like turnpits.
Right.
Basically, we talked about it in a workshop, so.
The, the we are Elkton. I like the we are Elkton. I'd like to see the we are Elkton expand out onto, to things out on Route 40, and I've talked to a couple businesses out on Route 40. The we part in my idea of, and Mr. Rob Reas' idea of getting a picture taken and put and getting committees and giving the sense of being part of something bigger than ourselves and getting people talking about it and getting people engaged and coming in and taking a look at our website. And Michelle, I am so sorry, because you're probably going to be the one that have to upload everything and keep that all in check, but I think that's where we can, we can keep on going with the we part. And then everybody sees the thing about Lyons Pharmacy, and they see the thing about the, the Alliance and the color vibe and Menahans and the new, new chicken shop downtown. I think just moving forward and getting more things on our website for people to come in and take a look at, and make sure that there's links to, to other things that are going on in town, it's going to create more of the greater-than-ourselves type of thing and more of a community we atmosphere. So I really appreciate that, Mayor. The last thing I have is, we've talked about parking meters, we've talked about grass clippings, we've talked about parking spots, we've, we've talked about a lot of things, but, but what we haven't talked about, and I started it when I first got on the board, was, was public safety. And I really think that, think that we need to start taking a really close look at what we're going to do, or what is being done. And it always seems to spike, I'm assuming, chief, right now, because everybody's been cooped up in the wintertime. Now the weather's broke a little bit, now everything's out and about. Some of the things that, that I'd like to see, and just going by your stats, it was, it was 1,100 arrests or 1,100 calls, was that per week or per month by, by your stats?
Per week.
Per week, 1,100 per week calls, just for Elkton. And then the captain had put out a thing that there was a 10% reduction. That was about right, right?
Yeah.
So we're still just, just under 1,000 calls per week, but we still lead everything. And my greatest concern is, what are we doing differently? And I do mean we, what are we doing differently to, to try to change that? Is there, is there a group in the police department that is dedicated to figuring out new creative ways?
What is it that you're asking that I'm changing?
I'm, I'm asking are we, what are we doing a little differently to combat the criminals that are getting smarter? I mean, that, that's, that's really what I'm, I'm looking for. Are we, I still like the substation idea. I still like, I know we have the bikes and we talked about a, a company buying bikes for us. Just moving forward, what are the, you had talked about K-9, I think is a, is a great idea.
Right.
So, those are the things. I mean, that, that's, that's what I'm looking for, the new improved way of trying to combat the, the criminal that keeps on getting smarter, you know? And I know that your officers, there's a lot of officers that are just reactive because that's what their job is. They're out of patrol, they're supposed to be reactive, they see something.
No, I don't agree with that. Most of our people are actually pretty proactive. That's why we lead the county in arrests most, most years.
Okay, I stand corrected, thank you. Is there anything new and exciting on the horizon for EPD? You know, that, that we're doing something different, we're? No?
No, body cameras.
That'll help out. That's the last I have, Mary, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs?
Dan, do you have a plan in place for the potholes on the streets that's going to be in need of repair beyond what you've already planned? And I guess because of the weather that we've had, I guess this situation has arisen.
We address the potholes, if we encounter one, we put it away. That's where our road restoration project, I'm still working together, trying to weigh the greatest needs. So, that's still in work.
Bridge Street, do you take the lead and getting that taken care of? That's natural responsibility there.
Bridge Street?
Right.
That's the state.
I know, but I'm saying.
I'll, if they, if it's my attention, I'll tell the state because I have contact in the state.
Yeah, I routinely notify the state of potholes like where Humpy sits up above there. There's a little Joel Snappers up there once in a while that they, they fill them up though.
And my point is, I know that's the state's responsibility, but you live here and often you travel that way along.
If it's small, if it's small, I can do it, I'll whip it out. I have no objection doing that. Sometimes I'll do some county roads, if they're small, if they're manageable, I will do it that way. Bridge Street gets kind of dicey because of the traffic, that's the only reason, like I said about Bridge Street. If it's something small, I can whip it out, I don't mind whipping it out, but.
Steve Ripold, I, I know we talked previously about debit cards and credit cards. Do you ever foresee a time when your office or your staff will make use of that? Because, you know, society is pretty much going away from money and using cards and, and I had a lady that was concerned today because she had a debit card and you don't honor them?
Oh, I mean for accepting payments.
For accepting payments, correct.
We accept, credit cards, we have to go online to do it and we have to pass on the fee that we are charged, the convenience fees. We've had two different service providers present their product to us and they could not match or beat our current provider of that service. So, they, they went by the wayside. We're not considering the debit card, we can look into that to see, I think a debit card will be charged, this is credit card will be charged.
Which understand what I'm pointing at, how society is moving from one extreme to the next.
Yes, it is, but that, that cost is comparable to the county's cost. And again, we've had two providers of that service present their product to us and we gave them what we are charged. They didn't, there was not a better offer from either of those two companies.
I think what, and I had asked Steve this and it's, I've been along with you on this. There's a lot of residents that would like to, to pay at the counter and, but when we show them that, I think he said, when we say service fee, it's about six or seven?
$6.95 per $250 charge.
So, it's, it's an additional charge on that credit card and, and we have to pass that on. We can't discount.
We could possibly set up an effective kiosk, a, a computer that they can pay online in our lobby.
Let's take a look at that.
They can pay online from home. You know, we could have it limited to just being able to access that, you know, website, the online thing.
Chief, there was a lady the other night, you sent us an email, she had a problem with, a connect with 911. Did you ever come up with a resolve or did they ever explain what happened?
No, I haven't. They, DES has the information, they have the, they now have the number from, from where that woman called and they're looking into where the breakdown occurred.
Okay.
But they haven't gotten back to me with the explanation as to exactly what happened.
Last, I want to thank you on behalf of the board, I guess, with incident at Douglas and Winston. You did send some, some texts out. Certainly there was a guy in my church who didn't realize until Sunday morning that a bullet actually went through his home. And matter of fact, his wife was one of the persons that was in the newspaper article today. She remained anonymous as far as name, but certainly you found out who the, the people were.
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, I was talking to Mr. Lemon earlier, what is the definition of a drug pen? And in your same conversation of giving an explanation, that person evidently is given a, a different jail sentence or looked at differently when they go to court?
Yeah, you talk about drug kingpin.
They're, they're titled and whatever.
Yeah, someone who's dealing in exceedingly large amounts of, of drugs, no matter what the drug is. And yes, oftentimes when they are arrested and they go in court, they don't, they don't plea out. They're subject to higher, higher sentences, much, much stiffer sentences.
Yes, that was in the newspaper today and certainly that helped us. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Potter?
Yeah, I only have a couple of things of concern. I know that Bridge Street is, that's the county, state, state. So, is this road here, right?
Yep, 268.
I'm concerned, we're talking about beautifying the town of Elkton, we are in Elkton. And we talked about this before, the bridge, coming to, over that bridge is a mess. A spray paint or something, though, it needs to be done to, just to, to get a better look of coming into town instead of looking at the way that. I don't know whether the state can help us or somebody needs to do something, just let it sit and deteriorate.
We, we've asked them on two occasions and, and they, they won't, they won't do it, they won't pay any.
We're talking about beautifying.
I actually formally went to the district engineer about it. It came up at a board meeting twice already. They, they won't pay any. I'm not sure if they allow us to pay it, but.
We need, we need to do something. I'm sorry.
To go over the bridge, I mean, we're all to go over the bridge.
I don't know. I, I remember that the board has brought up on, it took a couple of occasions because I went to Richard Lindsay originally and then I went to Greg Holtz again.
Lou, I, I know that you sent a letter to the state highway. I think we did that a couple of months ago about the bridges. And can you send that letter to our state senator?
Sure.
And let him know if it doesn't appear that we're getting any assistance. Or I can sign it, I can link you out of that a little bit.
You would sign it?
Yes.
It always has to come from the mayor of the town.
I'd like to sign and send it to Senator Hershey and see if we can get that expedited to some.
Second, second concern is, and I want to hit this one because I hope we're done with this. But when it snows, even though it's the, the state, we have to deal with the snow sitting on the, the bridges and people walking out in the streets. Somehow, no, there should be something inactive for them to come in and clear that out for the town of Elkton. I mean, because the town doesn't do that, right? The bridges. So, I mean, there's, there's safety concerns there regardless. Some people just, that's the only route they have is to go over the bridge.
I know the state contract, I mean, state highway, they do appoint contractors to go clear the bridges, but I can't address specific things, but I know they do have contractors that clear the bridges for us.
Okay, and then the last one, I know everybody loves to hear this one. Delaware Avenue. Once you get to Howard Street or the end of Main Street, you see the sign. I don't like going all the way through town to have to go all the way around town. Something should be out on the outer part so that we can be able to know that Delaware Avenue is closed. It was so congested, people going in, then having to go back around and then back over to Bridge Street, North Street, and it was a mess.
Where would you suggest a signs pick up?
Well.
I don't know, they suggested before, they didn't.
It had to be right at the end.
Where American Home and Hardware is. There, that would be a spot, I mean, not right on their property, somewhere on that road. Because people would come off that road and turn, either go, you know, I, I'm just saying, you only got that one road coming, that's Bridge Street.
So, they're going to go all the way down Howard Street and then they get to the top of the hill and then they realize that it's, it's closed.
Right. Then they'd have to go to Route 40 or down to Lansing Road and come around. Because I had, I've done that. Then I had a meeting, I got out of my, out of the house, turned and I said, oh, man, I had to turn all back around. And there was an accident that day. I had to go all the way up to Lansing Road, come back around and come back in town. But anyway, that's not your.
Do we have enough signage?
We have to go through the state for posting signs on state highways.
Well, what I'm thinking is you, you've got temporary signs, you've got the roll-up signs, you put them on a traffic sign and you pop them up and says, we can get them made if they say Howard Street or Delaware Avenue is flooded.
Yes.
So, why don't we look at getting a cost on 10 portable 48-inch roll-up signs with the stands? It'll cost us, for about $150 a sign.
Like the wind.
And we get, yeah, we get about six of them and, and when, when we know it's flooding, we'll pop them. One at American Home and Hardware, one at the end of, right at Route 40, if we get permissioned. So, they don't have to come down.
Right, right where the Route 40 bears off at the Village.
And we can make the sign say Delaware Avenue flooding or Howard Street flooding. Be specific to the flooding. Be easy. We've got that covered.
Then we're still looking into the employee of the month, didn't forget that. And we're working on, Commissioner Gibbs made a good suggestion, maybe pushing the fundraising basketball thing for later on in the summer or something, so we have more time to capture the kids while they're, during the summer break. So, that's it.
I think everybody got everything tonight. I just have a couple of things. On April the 18th Comcast has a Comcast Cares Day. We were awarded $1,000 to beautify the downtown and you can sign up as a volunteer. So, it's ComcastTheCommunity.com. If you go on there and you want to sign up to volunteer that day, we're going to make the town look nice, so. And the only other thing I had was St. Patrick's Day downtown was phenomenal all weekend. But I, I got here about 5:30 in the morning one day and the town was full of shamrocks. And there, I just want to make known that although we don't know who it is, I do know that 17 volunteers got up at 3:00 in the morning and went around town to do this. And that was amazing, 17 volunteers.
Leprechauns.
Leprechauns, yes, they were, thank you. But I just wanted to let that be known because it was quite amazing and people were great, so. That's it.
We've had a, certainly a lot of action in our downtown and over the last couple of months, starting off with, of course, the restaurant impossible. It's going to be aired on April 22nd and I think it's going to be, once again, it's going to be a major impact to our town from people from all around the country, crazy as it sounds. They, they follow that show and they come into those towns and they'll eat at Lyons Pharmacy. And good, bad or indifferent, there's going to be a lot of people coming into Elkton. And what Mary Jo had stated about the St. Patrick's Day, five-day event, I can tell you, I, I don't think, I, I can't remember in all my years that I've seen that many people in downtown Elkton. And I haven't been, I, I moved on, on West Main Street in 1980, but I don't remember any action, activities of that for five straight days, the same type of volume. And I would love to see that spread. You know, we have, we have the American Legion, which there's been some discussion with them to maybe try to bring them into the fold and maybe even the VFW in the near future. The only problem I have with the VFW, and I love them, it's, you'd have to go across Bridge Street. And that could be a challenging thing depending on how you schedule your activities. But it was a lot of action and I think that I only heard one complaint about the, the noise. And that was early morning bagpipes at 6:00 AM, I guess, yesterday morning. And, but one out of, and, and I, I have to say thousands of people were in town the last five days. And the, I don't know what the impact was for the other businesses. And that's why it's important for us to bring more and more businesses. And, and I think that, I'll put another plug for my plan, I think we'll be able to put something together to do that. All right, this is the time that we open it up for the public and the first one on our list, Ron, you're on.
I apologize for not bringing up my phone, I thought I had it off.
It's high-tech, these high-tech phones.
My name's Ron Wardrop, I live through 42 Douglas Street here in Elkton. I had a suggestion. Some time ago, I went to the Tatum Battlefield and I went back more than I wanted to. Well, I should say wanted to, I did want to go. And they had a building whereby they had the northern, south uniforms. And I don't know if anyone's been there, but it's really amazing to go see it. And I, I thought, I've been thinking about that a long time. Yesterday I had to go to Newark, Newark, Delaware to talk to the mayor there about a situation. But I would refer to the History Museum in Newark, which when I went in, there's a gentleman there, he's 80, 80 years of age and absolutely amazing, the knowledge that he had. He could tell a story about each item that, you know, and it was all, you know, sit down and read this or whatever, you know what I'm saying? He, he told you the whole story. And I, and when we were doing that, I was visualizing how I act sometimes in here. And I want to apologize for that in front of you. I know I didn't mean to lead you astray, I didn't mean to upset the meeting or anything of that nature, okay? I had a motive for that, unfortunately, I didn't reveal the motive to you and I apologize for that. And in the future, my presentations will be quite different. But I went to Newark and he, he told me a story about each, you know, each thing. I was, I was marveled at what the knowledge he had. But when I first went in, he said, he said, do you know what this is? I said, well, yeah, I thought it was the old train station. Say, well, it wasn't. See, I thought that. He said, right now, you're standing in the middle of Main Street. Yeah, you're standing in the middle of Main Street in Newark and there's a picture, big picture. And of course, you know, man, I joke around, I don't want to, he said, what are you looking for? So, make sure there's no traffic coming. Anyhow, it, it, there was a church that was a figure in it, in the town with that. And he knew all about it. And consequently, what arose from that was they had a bell that was in the top of the church, I guess. Not a guess, I know. And I guess whatever happened to the building, they couldn't reconstruct it for the, you know, for the steeple. But what I'm getting at, wouldn't it be nice, you know, you talk about the kids, what do they really know about Elkton? You got to get on the internet, I guess. They don't have anything to offer. You know, they had a theater, if you will, a small building, probably as big as the upstairs here, where the kids would go in, they had, the perimeter of it had different. go in. They had the perimeter of it had different, things of Antietam Battlefield. Yeah. We got things here. And I understand we have this historical society, but I couldn't, I couldn't picture 300, 400 kids going in there. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's to have like a, a building here, if not the upstairs, that the kids could go in, adult, you know, with adult supervision and see what really is in Elkton, what, what, where it really came from, where it really started. You know, this town is very significant for, for past history. We all know that. I mean, you got Nemec Olins Path, you talk about that and people look at you, what's that? But that was Route 40.
Yes.
Okay. And which was a, a, I think I might have said this before, but it was a path from Fort So and Dupont, Delaware to the one here in Maryland. And they really were packed. Yeah, they're really packed. It's just constant, you know? And as much as it's Saturday, you know? Now in Antietam, they got, they got a civil war that they, you know, they perform.
Yeah.
Like, there's another state, Pittsburgh, I don't know where it's at. But anyhow, that was kind of my suggestion, might want to ponder it. Because to my knowledge, there was a fee, but it was very, it wasn't really high. But they had a lot of other things, you know? Elkton, 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 Elkton. Yeah, which was there. They said, so that revenue went somewhere. I sure didn't go, the town owned it, so I imagine that revenue from that went to the town. That's just a suggestion. That's just a suggestion I made. And that's, that.
So your suggestion is to try to build a little bit more of the history?
Yeah.
With the town?
Yeah. So the kids, you know, the kids, you know, I mean, it makes sense to me. And I think that was it. Other than, I'm going to commend Commissioner Piner here. Him and I talked on some certain matter and so forth. But of course, I've been in close touch with his brother on sort of the matter. And he called me today, his brother called me today. And he said, Ron, I've arranged for three tickets for you to go to the Blue Hen, what did you play, Bob?
Blue Rocks.
Blue Rock. But it's not there, it's at the Max?
The IMAX Theater. Yes.
Well, I'm going there.
Very good.
I have no idea. I'm sure when, when I go, I'll bring back the good news.
All right.
He would not have invited me if he didn't think there's something he wants me to say. That's all I, that's all I can say. But I appreciate your.
Thank you, Ron.
Appreciate.
Thank you so much. All right. I know we have more to want to speak. Mr. Litzemberg, come on down.
Just a quick question. You can hear me from there. With this annexation you're talking about, when the streets are dedicated from the county or the developments to the town, are they going to be required to maintain the streets to the standard of the town?
You know, that's a.
Because there's a lot of potholes and I don't think you want to be getting involved in an annexation, but you're going to have to redo streets because that's going to be very expensive.
No, you're 100%.
Something you have to think, have to think about.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.